Dear Lord, once again we invoke your presence to help us in our deliberations, to do the best we can for our citizens, your people. In your name, amen.
Amen. I pledge allegiance to the flag, the United States of America, and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, sir. Mr. City Manager, are there any items to be added or deleted?
No, sir.
Okay, thank you. Moving on to open public comment. This is a chance for anyone to speak on any non-agendized item. If you'd like to speak, please come forward, or I guess you would have already submitted a request. But I don't see any, and Lynette is shaking her head, so nobody's running forward, and Milford's not here, so we'll move on. We'll deal with conflicts of interest as they arise. On to scheduled items, 2A, which is our student presentation regarding results from a community survey conducted in District 4. Dr. Wang.
Is she on? Will they see her on here, or where is she? I don't know.
Yes.
He's nodding yes. She can too. Okay, so, welcome, everybody. I am a professor at Loma Linda University, and I'm the Director of the Epidemiology Program. And this is one of my master's level students, back in March.
Hello.
Back in March, this is John V. Shaw, back in March. John V. helped me collect survey data from District 4, and she's going to show you which district that is on the map. John V. helped me collect a two-page survey, basically engaging community members, and seeing what community members feel about the community, and what they would like to see moving forward. So, John V., are you ready?
Hello. Can you all hear me?
John V., you might have to talk a little louder.
Hello. Hello.
That's good, John V. Go for it.
Good evening, everyone. So, here is the presentation for Loma Linda Community Engagement Survey. So, I am John V., I'm a student of Loma Linda University, and this project is mainly based on Loma Linda Community Engagement Survey. I'm the student of Loma Linda, and this project is being mentored by my special professor, Dr. Rhonda Spencer-Hong, who is a professor and program director for Loma Linda University. So, first of all, I would like to start with background and methods. So, this survey was mainly conducted in March. It was mainly distributed as a resident of District 4 as a part of our community engagement efforts. The purpose of this was to involve the community in shaping our action items and initiatives if elected. So, through this survey, we are mainly aiming to foster the meaningful participation from the residents, ensuring their voices were mainly heard during the decision-making process. So, by engaging directly with the community, we can better understand their needs, priorities, and even the differences and everything. So here, I would like to distribute the map for the Loma Linda Community Engagement Survey. So here, you can see that there are the four maps, and the survey was mainly being conducted into the District 4. And so here, you can point out in the purple section for it. Now, you can see the Loma Linda Community Engagement Survey. So this was the survey, it was mainly distributed into the seventeen members. In this survey, it was mainly found, first thing was the overall economic health of the city, the second was the overall quality of the transportation system. Even it included many other things, like overall maintenance of infrastructure, overall feeling of safety, overall quality of parks and recreational opportunities. And the other thing that also included, like overall quality of park recreational opportunities, and it was mainly divided into the four things, like excellent, good, fair, and poor. And there were also many other things, like, please rate how safe and unsafe do you feel in commercial areas during the day? It was mainly divided into the four things, like very safe, somewhat safe, somewhat unsafe, and very unsafe. It also has many other open-ended questions, which we will discuss into our next part of our presentation. So here I am to discuss about the survey results. So the topic areas, as we discussed, it mainly includes the economic health of the city, the transportation system, the infrastructure, the overall feeling of safety. It also includes the quality of parks and recreational opportunities. It also has resident engagement and community, community crime, homelessness, the vacant business. So everything is divided as discussed, as essential, very important, somewhat important, and also not as important. So the top areas for the focus identified for Loma Linda over the next two years, it mainly includes the overall feeling of safety, overall economic health of the city. It also includes the overall approach to homelessness. And the fourth one was overall quality of transportation, that we mainly found from our results. So now, talking about the results, the first thing that we found was overall feeling of safety. So over a hundred percent of the people say it is very essential or it's very important. Here, we can see in the graph, like eighty-six percent and fourteen percent. So by adding this to, it's really essential and very important. And no one said that it is somewhat important or not at all important. Now moving to the next part, for the overall economic health of the city. So overall economic health of the city is really a concern. So about ninety-four percent of the people, here also you can see the graph, like by forty-two percent and fifty-two percent of the people said it is essential or very important. Now moving forward, here I would like to talk about like overall approach of homelessness. So overall seventy-nine percent of the people said that it is essential or very important. Here also you can see in the graph, like fourteen percent of the people said that it is somewhat important, and seven percent of the people said it is not at all important. Now moving to overall quality of the transportation system, so overall seventy percent said it is essential or very important. Now, here I would like to discuss about the additional survey results, like how the residents mainly feel about the city. So here, we can talk about the overall quality or maintenance of parks and recreational opportunities. So here, we can see that overall fifty percent said it is excellent or very good. Moving forward, the other thing is overall sense of civic or community pride. So overall fifty-six percent said it's excellent or good. And here you can see also that into the graphical platform. We also analyzed overall traffic flow on the major streets. So according to all the survey results, we mainly found like overall forty percent said it's excellent or very good, and others said it's fair or poor. Now moving forward, we also analyzed the open-ended questions that were mainly seen into the survey. The open-ended questions, it mainly includes like what strategies could the city implement to address crime? It's really important thing, as the crime is really increasing. The other question was like what strategies could the city implement to address the homelessness? And even the third thing was like what strategies could the city implement to attract the business? There are other open-ended questions, like what specific business would you like to see in Loma Linda that aren't currently into the city? The other questions, like what strategies could the city implement to improve the economic health of the city? Even the other thing was like what other ideas could the city implement to address any other challenges the city is experiencing? So from analyzing all this data, we mainly came into the strategies for economic health insight, and these were mainly the insights from the community members. The first thing was urban maintenance and beautification. So prioritizing and upkeeping the public spaces to enhance the aesthetic appeal and the community pride is really important. The other thing was financial stewardship, like optimizing spending on focusing on maintaining the existing infrastructure rather than investing into the new project. The third thing was enhance public transportation. So by mainly expanding and improve the public transit network to facilitate, to commute, and to boost tourism. The other thing was support for the local business. So the providing the assistance and incentives for local business and the restaurants to stimulate the economic growth. So these were all the insights from the community members, and I think that we should really focus on this. Now moving forward, the other open-ended question, as I first mentioned, like what are the main strategies to address the crime? So these were the insights mainly given by the community members. The first thing was like neighborhood watches, the other thing was like increase in police patrols. The other thing was utilization of technology, the collaboration from the delivery services, even addressing homelessness. So addressing another traffic measures, install traffic claiming tools to improve the pedestrian safety and reduce accidents. The other thing was community policy initiatives. So here, I would like to discuss, like what are the strategies did the community members mainly suggest to address the homelessness? The homelessness task force, even the utilization of shelters. The other thing, it was shared, like affordable housing initiatives, even like support service access, municipal codes enforcement, and even like remove abundant building. So these were all the strategies were mainly used to address the homelessness. The other thing was like what are the other ideas did the community members say for this? The main thing was like allow the residents to report the problem with a complaining picture. So this is a really important thing, and it is mainly considered as online reporting platform enhancement. It also includes the categories like weeds, water leaks, domestic signs, and traffic issues. The other thing was economic development for social issues. It includes boost job opportunities, especially for the elderly population. To recognize the link between the strong job market and even reduce the social issues. The third thing, it has really mainly been discussed about the sales tax rate equity. To advocate the equal sex rate across the city is really important. And it mainly ensures and the fairness and consistency in tax burdens for the residents and business. And it's really important to implement the salary tax. The other thing was traffic safety enforcement. To implement the safety personal or programs like safety, personal legal antiforce. I'm mainly focusing on enforcement efforts on the areas with frequent speeding violations, especially near the schools. The other thing was the community engagement initiatives. It involves to invite the residents to the city meetings, to encourage the participant into the decision-making process, and to address the city challenges very effectively. So these were all the ideas mainly useful for addressing the city challenges. So together, now all let's make Loma Linda the city for health and prosperity. So these are my references, and together we can really build a connected communities. Thank you so much for listening, and don't hesitate to ask me any question. Thank you.
Thank you, John V. Do you guys, can we, you have any questions for John V.? Any questions?
Hello.
You have a question?
Okay. No questions? Kevin has a question? No? Okay.
This is Kevin speaking, I do have a question, if it's okay, never mind.
Yes. Oh, go ahead. Okay.
This is Kevin speaking, I'm a resident here of Loma Linda. In terms of encouraging walkability and more accessible pedestrian access, was anything mentioned about that, is anyone talking about that in the community? Just curious.
John V., can you hear the question from Kevin?
Not really. So in terms of encouraging and walkability, has anyone been? No. So first, I would like to say thank you so much for asking this question, but after analyzing all the surveys, I didn't think that there was any such issues raised by any community members.
Okay.
Just curious, how many surveys were sent out, and how many did we get back?
This was sent out across the entire District 4? So I'll answer, John V., it was for the registered voters. I don't know if she did. Seventeen came back, so after sending out.
How many were sent out?
So it was the registered voters. So it was hundreds were sent out, but seventeen came back.
So there were total seventeen surveys were sent, and seventeen surveys was mainly written.
Yeah.
Surveys were sent, and seventeen surveys were...
Just, I have a question, or question slash comment. I know we have been working on our own community engagement survey to be sent out for some of the elements in our plan, right? And I know you've been working with staff, is that going to be very similar? Some of these questions are going to be captured, so we'll have like a bigger results, because it'll come back for all the city instead of just District 4.
Yeah, that, we also, if it would be desired, we could eventually send the same survey again to the entire community. Because for sure, the environmental justice survey, the focus is a lot of the environmental justice questions. But we did add some of the other questions to that survey. So quite possibly, did the survey go out again already? I think, Nicole?
No, we're still working with our consultants.
To that survey, so quite.
Okay, but yeah, we can make sure to include some more of these questions, if you guys like.
It's very interesting, fascinating data, thank you for sharing.
Yeah. Thank you. Any last questions for John V.?
Yeah, sure.
Okay, John V., just wanted to thank you for coming, you did an outstanding job.
I don't know if she can hear us, but thank you.
Yeah.
Thank you so much, Dr. Spencer, for giving this opportunity, and thank you so much, all.
Yeah.
I hope she can hear us, but thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, we will move on to 2B, which is a public hearing on a precise plan and design tentative tract map. And this was something we had started to look at before, but it was continued. Mr. City Manager, or I'm not sure who's going to present.
Yes, Nicole will present this item.
Awesome, thank you.
Okay. Good evening, Mayor and members of the council. I'm Nicole Campbell, the Associate Planner for the city. There we are. Okay, tonight, I'm presenting a nine-lot residential subdivision on Park Avenue. At the end of the presentation, staff, myself, and the applicant will be available for questions. This project, as the mayor mentioned, was on the agenda for April 9th, and was continued to the meeting tonight. For the council members that were present, we did have some public comment at that meeting, and written public comment was also provided in the agenda packet. The application before you includes a tentative tract map request to subdivide a 2.8-acre parcel and to create nine single-family residential lots and one lettered lot for a stormwater drainage basin. The precise plan of design application is a request to demolish an existing single-family home for the construction of nine new single-family residences. Sorry. So because we have new council members and the, and members of the public that may not be familiar with our land use procedures, the tract map portion of this project requires that the project come to City Council, first being recommended by Planning Commission. So this process is the entitlement stage, where the site and architectural design is reviewed. And then if the project moves forward tonight, it will move forward to plan check for technical review with building, fire, public works, and engineering. Okay. So this is an aerial of the project site. It's located on the north side of Park Avenue between Coloma Street and Curtis Street. Here are the existing conditions of the site, facing north. The site is mostly vacant with overgrown vegetation, but it is currently developed with a single-family home proposed to be demolished. The site is within the low-density residential land use designation and zoning district. The zone is intended for single-family residences. The density does allow for eleven single homes for this site. However, the applicant is moving forward with nine single-family homes, which allows for larger-sized lots. So as previously mentioned, the applicant is proposing to subdivide the 2.8-acre site into nine residential lots and one lettered lot. The lot will range from 8,667 square feet to 10,992 square feet. This exceeds our minimum lot requirement, which is 7,200 square feet. The lots are proposed to be accessed from a new cul-de-sac street off of Park Avenue. Here is the site plan, showing the nine residential lots, each with its own single-family home on it. And then on the bottom left-hand corner, identified as Lot A, is the stormwater drainage basin. There is a five-and-a-half-foot sidewalk along the new street adjacent to the new homes. And on the other side, or the western side of the street, the applicant is proposing a twelve-foot-wide landscape strip to serve as a grassy swale for drainage. The applicant is proposing two floor plans within the small development. There is a two-story, 3,237-square-foot home with five bedrooms and a two-car garage. And then Plan B is a two-story, 2,886-square-foot home with four bedrooms, one flex room, and a two-car garage. There will be two architectural themes for each of the floor plans. We have Spanish and craftsmen. The Spanish architectural styles have arched doorways and windows, stucco exteriors, and then the red tiled roofing. The craftsman architecture has tapered columns, siding, and low-pitched gable roofs, which are appropriate to that style. And then this is the Plan B elevations. I'm showing the craftsmen coming in two colors, the cool-toned blue shown in the slide before, and this earthy green color. Here are the renderings from different viewpoints, as if you're driving down the cul-de-sac. As required by city code, each home will have a minimum of two street trees. The proposed project does qualify for a categorical exemption from the CEQA requirements. This is because it's an infill lot surrounded by development on all sides. Additionally, a traffic analysis was prepared and found that the proposed project is compliant with the requirements of Measure V. The traffic study analyzed five nearby intersections and assessed whether any off-site improvements were needed. The study concluded that the traffic caused by the project would not result in any significant delays, and off-site improvements were not necessary or justified. On March 6th, the Planning Commission recommended that the City Council approve the project with the following conditions. The first, to include a six-foot block wall on the western property line. The second, to provide a twelve-inch concrete landing on the western drainage swale. Third, to add additional lighting along the western property line. And finally, to establish a drainage solution for historic drainage in the area. After careful consideration, staff recommends that City Council approve the project with only the conditions to include the block wall on the western property line, where there is not already an existing block wall, and to address the historic drainage. And then, this is just the full formal recommendation. So if you have any questions?
I have a question. Why did the Planning Commission have to put in that drainage comment?
So drainage is typically addressed after entitlement, but there were some property owners that were concerned with the drainage moving from the east to the west. So that condition was added to address their concerns.
Okay, that's not necessary, because that would have been addressed anyway. Yeah, I'm just wondering why the Planning Commission gets involved in drainage.
It was heavily discussed at the Planning Commission meeting.
Sounds like it.
I think there were two specific commenters at the Planning Commission that talked about it.
Yes, there were some surrounding property owners that were concerned, and so we're going to look at different ways to address that.
And on drainage, my comment would be it's kind of unusual to have a twelve-foot-wide grass strip for drainage from the west. Does that, do those properties naturally drain to their backyards?
It drains that direction right now, it's to the northwest corner.
So the Coloma Street houses drain to their backyards? No. The other way, the front.
Let me let the engineer answer the question.
Hi, I'm Doug Goodman, Goodman Associates, a civil engineer on the project. The discussion at the Planning Commission was brought up because one of the adjacent neighbors to the east felt like there was drainage that was being blocked, and they were basically making the statement that we were altering the natural drainage, historic drainage pattern. And in fact, all of the properties that have been developed on all sides of this project have altered the historic drainage pattern, which basically goes in a northwesterly direction. So when the housing development occurred on Coloma Street, Coloma was a very flat street that drains directly north to Redlands Boulevard, and all of the lots on the east side of Coloma were raised above that, which means they block the drainage from this site. So the drainage swale is, that you're referring to, is only for handling our water quality management and drainage on our site.
I think drainage is a problem. If anybody has taken a look, I was somewhat appalled when I walked the homes in District 4, the homes behind, off of, is it California, to the east? Those new homes behind, say, is it the Starbucks over there? Do you know what homes I'm talking about? I've never seen so much standing front water. It looked like we were breeding grounds for, you know, West Nile. And it's in the front, it's like moats in the front of their yards. So clearly, like drainage, I would really be concerned, especially if it came up. especially if it came up on this thing, that drainage is going to be a problem.
Mr. Peskow, you have a comment?
There's also the mud that flows down about every hundred years. That flooded a lot of properties in that district in 2010.
Our thousand-year storm.
Whatever. It was a lot of mud. It was worse than West Nile. It was breeding pigs. Mud.
I spent a lot of time looking at this project and actually met with staff and a number of the residents. I'm not concerned about drainage. I'm sure the engineers are putting together a plan that will ensure that we don't have drainage issues. The one item that came to the forefront, among several, and they're not necessarily, you know, items that are going to, you know, kill the project. I just think there's a way to improve a project like any other project. And sometimes, you know, it gets passed the planning commission, but it eventually comes to our, you know, our dais and of course, we got to weigh in the residents' concerns as well. One of the concerns was regarding the lighting and just ensure there's enough lighting along the western property line. And it was suggested that we should, you know, add in the decorative lights. And I think there's a name for them. I guess they're called ballard lights and we have them here, which kind of help see the, where you're walking. One of the bigger concerns that was for me specifically was there was no sidewalk on the western edge. And I think we should have a sidewalk that makes it easy for someone to walk all the way around the, the street, not just one side. And I think that's a fairly easy fix. And then the only other really issue that I, I thought that could be addressed and properly mitigated is parking. I know that that was a big, big concern with many of the residents. And I got to tell you, it's a concern of mine as well. I mean, my own street, I'm having a hard time parking in front of my own house. And I don't have houses with multiple houses possibly behind them. So, and try to mitigate that. And it may not be an issue initially, but over time it becomes an issue, is simply just to at least widen the driveway to make room for an extra space, which is something that the house that was recently built at the corner of Coloma and Park Street has. And I think it's very doable. And that will help mitigate it. I think over time, there's other ways that we can mitigate parking by, you know, changing some development codes, but that's for a different discussion at a different time. Overall, I think the project is nice. I have no problem with it. I just think that if we can address those issues of the sidewalk, the lights, and the extra parking space, I think it's a very good project.
Are the driveways long enough for a car to park? Because you know, the homes that are built on Newport, you can't park a car in the driveway unless the garage is open.
So, so to answer the question, yes, the garage is, the driveway is long enough.
That you can park a regular-sized car in a driveway?
Yes. Yes, you can. And then in addition to, to that, we did have a conversation with the applicants that willing to widen the driveway to accommodate additional parking. Also with regard to the ballards, lighting, we can put that along the west side of the street. But with addition, in addition to that is the sidewalk. We recommend that because that is also treated as a basin for the water percolate. We recommend that we can put a decomposed granite walkway. You know, it's still, it's still take care of, people can walk on it, but at the same time, it take care of the, the percolation. So it's, so, and, and the applicant understand that and we'll, we'll work with them to get that accomplished.
So if I understand you correctly, it sounds like it is possible to go ahead and widen the driveway to make room for that.
Yes.
So it may not necessarily be reflected in these plans, but we can approve it with those conditions to ensure that they are taken care of.
Yes.
Thank you.
Jarb, was that, for, for the homes on Newport, was that the plan to have a drive? Like, you, you know what I'm talking about? I'm worried that they're going to pull something like that in this. But I'm concerned of the length of the driveways. Like, they can't, it'll be in there.
Sorry. So for the site plan, it's, it's a minimum of 20 feet from the property line to the garage, which is larger than our standard parking size. So there would be enough car for, enough room for a car to park in the driveway, for two cars to park side by side.
Okay. Thank you.
This is a public comment, or a public hearing. So I'm going to open the public hearing and invite public comments. Anyone wishing to speak on this item? Okay, seeing none, I'll close the public comments section. And look for a motion. Excuse me.
I would move the tentative tract map, number P2-264, precise plan of design, P2-266, ensuring that the changes that I, are going to be reflected in the final project, which is the conditions that we have, the additional lighting, the widening of the driveway, and a modified sidewalk on the western property line.
Okay. And that motion is inclusive of 1, 2, and 3, correct? All three pieces?
Could, sorry, excuse me. Could we modify that just to say to the extent that it meets code?
No. It's, obviously it meets code the way it is. This is ways that we want to enhance it to make sure it's something that the community feels that it, it meets the requirements. If, if we, if we meet code, then we're doing the minimum. We want to, and I think the applicant has already agreed that he's willing to go a little bit further, so.
I, I understand what you're saying. I just have concerns if, if the conditions that you were wanting to add, like widening all the driveways, that may not meet code for all of the driveways.
I believe that's already been addressed. I think the staff already stated that that's possible and the applicant's willing to do that. So I don't think that's an issue.
So an exhibit has not been prepared to show that that's possible for all of the lots. So we don't know, it hasn't been mapped out. So I think what Diane is saying is that if it is possible, a spot be added.
That's why, that's why he recommended we, we work with the applicants to, to.
Well, I, I would, you know, I mean, I'm going to trust staff that they're going to make sure that it meets code and it's possible. But if it comes back and I'm finding out that they can only widen two driveways out of nine, then it's going to be an issue. I, I, I think, I've looked at it, there's enough room there to widen the driveways. There's no doubt about that.
Maybe the architect could add?
Hi, my name is Ben Millet with Dimension Architects. And we're the architect that did the, the project. I appreciate you guys' comments and concerns. And we're looking to implement as many as we can. As far as the, the driveways, we don't have an exhibit yet, as was, as Nicole said, but we, I did quickly look at it. When the issue came up there, at the end of the dry, at the end of the cul-de-sac, we can't widen those. It's very tight, right there, if you look at the site plan. On some of the ones that are on the north, I'm sorry, the east side of the street, we can widen them. I noticed that, that tended to remove onsite, I'm sorry, on-street parking. So we added a driveway parking and we lost on-street parking, which as we were looking at how people would likely use the properties, if anybody's going to be parking in the back for the ADU, they're going to be, have to, have to be forced to park in the driveway now of the front house, which may or may not become an issue as far as how people use the properties. I don't know if you guys have it, but we did do a, a parking exhibit. And we did a parking calculation based off of the, the more strict multifamily parking tabulation. And it turns out that, I, I don't remember off the top of my head, I think we were five spots over what would be required if hypothetically speaking, this were a multifamily project. Multifamily parking bases it off the number of bedrooms. Single-family is just, as far as I'm concerned, as far as I know, it's just two garage and two, two onsite parking for the single-family. So in order to, to address the parking with, ooh, now it's loud. In order to, to address the parking where we can't widen the driveways, as you can see, they're all pretty tight. There's a couple of them, Lots 2 and 3 and 5, I think were the, were the three that were the easiest to, to widen. But this right here shows the number of onsite and off-site parking that we have. And then I think it's two pages after this, it shows the tabulation. So we're hoping that could help justify the parking. You've got the whole east side of the street, which there's no houses and it's just street parking.
Yeah. I know what you're trying to say, but I'm going to tell you right now, parking is an issue and it may not seem like an issue. And I know your study says that you more than mitigate it. To ensure that there's no confusion about how parking is addressed, i-if it's not clear how many houses are going to have widened parking for the driveways, then I would amend my motion to continue this item until you bring back a site plan showing maybe specifically how are you widening the driveways.
Okay.
Otherwise, you know, it, it's too vague to say, oh yeah, we're going to go ahead and widen the driveways, but when it's all said and done, we're all going to widen two driveways.
Well, I think if you look at the site, and I don't, if, you know, let's look at like Lot 2, 3, 4, for example, if we were to widen those driveways, we would gain an extra spot onsite parking, which would be used by the front house specifically. But by doing that, we're also, now we're losing on-street parking, which could be used by anybody.
I'm not, I'm sorry, but I'm not worried about anybody. I'm going to tell you right now, parking is an issue and the way the project is being done, it's going to make it a bigger issue. There's ways to mitigate it. I'm not sure where we're having to argue with this. It's, it's pretty straightforward. I don't have strangers parking in front of my house. I have people living across the street. So I'm not worried about other people parking on, on the street there. I think we need to make sure there's enough parking for everyone there. I, I want to make sure, I mean, the residents there have spoken pretty clearly about what they want their neighborhood to look like. I'm part of that residency. We want to make sure this project is nice and it meets the standards of our community to ensure there's enough parking for everybody. If there's still questions about parking, I, then I amend my motion, we continue this item and you bring back a site plan that shows me where the widening is. I, I'm sorry, but I'm not going to be persuaded that adding one parking spot in front of the house somehow eliminates parking on the street. People will still going to come park on the street if they choose to, but it doesn't eliminate that.
But I think, I think the problem is when you widen the driveway, you can't block the driveway now on the street. So it, it reduces the spots on the street.
That's, I'm not concerned about that. I'm more concerned about the fact that if every, if that house of four people ends up having four cars and then three more people in the house behind it, you're now looking at seven parking spots. I really shouldn't have to argue this, but I guess you're giving me an opportunity to argue it. It's becoming an issue when it comes to, when you have so many cars parked on the street, you're going to end up having all sorts of issues for safety. You can't even have places to put your trash cans. I mean, it just, it causes other issues by having the whole street full of cars. And I think this is a very simple solution. Widen the driveway shouldn't be a, should be a no-brainer.
I, I guess, hold, hold on a second. You, you do understand that you cannot block a driveway? That's a California vehicle code section. So you have to be careful, as you widen those driveways, you take up space on the street. Am I on the right page here?
Excuse me. I think we got sidetracked a little bit. The intent is not to widen the drive approach, only the driveway on the site, so that in front of the house, where currently the site plan shows two cars parked in front of the garage, the goal is not to widen it and make it a three-car drive approach, only have room for three cars in front of the garage. And that's possible on most of these lots.
You're just saying it's not possible on the, on the cul-de-sac.
The cul-de-sacs are the tightest ones. So every place there's room, it will be done.
I, I think it would be easier to actually widen the driveway rather than just the approach. And I mean, I'm not disputing the fact that that actually removes the parking space on the street. I'm not worried about that. There's plenty of parking. You just said, there's plenty of parking on the other side. So if there was going to be an issue, they could easily park across the street. The bigger issue for me is safety and try to eliminate as many cars as we could on the street. This is a safety issue for me. It really is. I can't tell you how many cars have been broken into my neighborhood. And guess what? Most of them are on the street. Very few are on the driveways. So it is a safety, safety issue here. Furthermore, it complicates postal service, deliveries, you name it. It's, we're, we're having multiple issues. People are getting packages delivered, people park in the middle of the street. I'm appreciative of the fact that your street is wide enough to accommodate that. But adding additional spaces on the street for parking makes it even more challenging. So to me, it's a safety issue that is easily fixed. And I don't think this is actually a big debate here, to be honest with you. It's, you're adding, you know, all of 12, 13, it's one cubic feet of concrete, you know? It's, it's pretty straightforward. And I, I truly believe there is enough room for, to widen all of them. I, I know you have architects. I've had other people look at it. There's enough room. Trust me.
I, I think there's no argument on, on behalf of the developer. I think the coordination with Public Works can achieve what you're after, whether it's widening everything or just the onsite parking. It, it can be achieved. There's agreement to that.
Then we shouldn't be having the discussion. I mean, as long as that's agreed on, then it's, it's a non-issue.
So what's your motion?
Well, it all started with making sure it meets code. And it turns into a big discussion about whether it meets code or not. In this case, I, my motion stands that we accommodate to ensure that all the driveways are widened to accommodate a third, a third car on each property, along with the other items.
Okay, I'm not hearing a second on that motion.
Second.
Okay. We have a first and a second. I will tell you, I'm not comfortable in voting for something that could be outside of code because then that puts the city in a, in a lividest position down the road unless I can be assured we're not going to violate anything like was done in some of our other neighborhoods in the past.
That's why, that's why he moved to bring it back.
No, he didn't move to bring it back. He moved to move it.
He didn't?
No. I said only if I can be assured that my original motion wasn't going to be addressed. But I just heard from the applicant that it doesn't sound like it's an issue unless I'm hearing something different now.
I know, you showed it to him, but he says he does not want that. What, what they want to do is leave the approach the same size. You don't want that, correct?
Correct. I need the widen, the driveway widened.
Okay. The motion was to approve it based on widening the driveways. Do you still second that? Or was your motion thinking we were going to move it? Or continue it?
I'm okay. I, I, I kind of like Jarb's plan. If he can come up with something that works and, and then if it's a significant modification, he can bring it back for our approval.
I know, I understand that, but that's not the motion that's on the table.
Are you asking to bring it back?
I don't, see, it sounds to me like you want to be sure that there's a third and you want to make sure it meets code. And if they can assure us that they can do both of those things, then proceed. If not, then they should bring it back.
Well, then I agree with you. So I think we're all in agreement that if we, making these, we're making this motion on the assumption that it's going to meet code and address my issues. And my understanding.
So it's contingent?
Yeah. Well, I, I don't want to find myself approving for something and then looking back on what gets billed and it's completely different than what we agreed on. So I'm going to have to take everybody's word on the fact that the wide drivers are going to be widened and it's going to meet code.
So it's contingent on two things? That there's a third car in each driveway?
Yeah.
And it meets code?
Correct. And if, I think it can. I know that they're, they're telling me that it can't, but I, I think it can.
I thought the two homes at the entrance to the cul-de-sac wouldn't allow for that. Correct? Correct.
Well, Jarb just showed me a drawing that might work.
Okay. Let, let, let me mention this. What, we went over this with, with Councilman Papescu with regard to this concern for additional parking. for additional parking for the third car to, to the ADU, I'm gonna call it ADU in the back. So what we plan to do is the width of the driveway at the cul-de-sac stay the same, okay? As soon as you go in, instead of straight through into the garage, we, we taper the driveway from, from twenty feet wide out, a little wider, so that the car can come in and park on the side, and the car that wanna go in the garage can still go into the garage.
If that's required for those two driveways, I have no problem with that. I don't wanna find myself looking at a project where they've done that in every single one of them. I just wanna make sure it's real clear what we're approving is, is what we wanna get changed. So, I mean, I'm gonna take your word for it, but if, unless you wanna continue to bring it back, I know that Mayor Duper wants to make sure it meets code, and I understand that, so...
Yes.
Yeah, I mean, I can't imagine us approving something.
He just made a motion that he wouldn't support what the attorney said about meeting code.
No.
I think we could, everybody can recall exactly that was what was said.
He didn't want...
You said, "I don't care about code."
He didn't want the excuse of code, making people stop trying to put a third car in, that's what I interpreted.
No, and then there was another piece where I understood the applicant to say, "We're going to have a singular driveway that expands out." And Mr. Popescu said, "No, I don't want that, I want double-access driveways, which eliminates parking on the street." I don't, I don't think, I'm not trying to belabor this either, but we have a lot of confusion here, let's all make sure that we're on the same page. Those are exactly what was said, am I right or wrong?
That's, that's my recollection, and see, there's a lot, there's a lot of parts to meeting code, too. Um, I mean, planning staff, they know best, but part of it includes you, parking is not allowed in setbacks. So that's another piece of meeting the code. So it's hard to sit here and kind of redesign the project, um, without knowing if, if that widening is going to interfere with other code requirements. The way the project is, is, um, now, and the way staff recommends, it does meet code on the parking for ADUs and the parking according to, um, our code. But if we start doing this, then we're not sure if we're gonna be able to meet code requirements. So, but if you're saying it's contingent, which I think is what Councilmember Rhodes was saying, or, or confirming, or asking clarification on, that it's subject to meeting code, um, then that's something staff can, can support.
I think in an interest of clarity, then I would like to have the project brought back, so I can see how you're meeting code with those items. I mean, at this point, I'm hitting two things, all, it's meeting code, while it might meet code, it might not meet code, well, why don't we look at redesigning it and bringing it back? Unless the applicant agrees to all these conditions, then it's a moot point, we don't have to bring it back. I mean, the applicant can go and do stuff that it maybe even exceeds code. I, I'm not even sure why we're having to debate this, because I think the applicant said that he was willing to work with it, so...
Good evening, uh, my name's Alex Musino, I'm the applicant, uh, been listening to your comments, uh, and you're referring basically to the entire city, those problems, those issues, security, parking, one house having five cars, and blocking, uh, trash collection, brok, blocking mail delivery, et cetera, you'll see that throughout the city. If you continue with that position, your developments in the city are gonna slow up or be nonexistent. This project, we, we have bigger lots that supersede code. If we start expanding driveways, we're gonna start encroaching on yard setbacks, that's another issue that you're not taking into account. So what would that mean? We'd have to reduce our project size, we've already reduced it from the max to nine, if you continue with that, it'll go down to seven, it'll make this project non-viable. If you want that, that's fine.
So it sounds to me like your architects or your designer, engineer said you can address the, the issue about the driveways, but now you're saying that you can't, so now I'm really confused.
Excuse me, he said he would look at that, not that we can address, a site plan would have to be redesigned, like your city attorney is indicating, okay?
Correct.
And what would that implicate or mean, that we would have to consider other code items? And we might, and one was encroachment, or not meeting, uh, yard, uh, side yard setbacks.
I believe you're able to do that.
Well, you believe so, uh, that's one thing, well, we believe maybe not, okay? I'm, I'm insisting that if you continue insist on that, this project's not moving forward, and you're gonna have a hard time getting more projects, any projects approved in this city.
I, I appreciate your concern, I said this is a good project.
Well, it isn't a concern, you know, we're, we're the investor here, I know your position is to look at projects, and that's good, but we are taking the risk, okay? We've already reduced the number of homes that we could build here, and now what you're saying, we'll reduce them more, that's not gonna make this project viable, we've got other properties in this city that if this continues, if you continue with that position, we're not gonna build anything here.
That, that's your prerogative.
Thank you, it is.
I, I think there's opportunity to improve the project, and I think it's a very simple solution, I'm not sure why it's becoming such a contentious issue. I don't think it decreases the amount of homes, it just addresses a concern that the residents have. Simple as that.
Sir, if you go around that neighborhood, there's rental homes there that have five, six cars to each house, through, on Coloma, you go see that, on Park, you go see the same thing. So we're, we're trying to build a new project that will enhance the neighborhood, and now you're objecting? We comply with all the parking requirements, the code requirements, we exceed them, and I, what you're proposing, it'll, will come, will be below that parking, meeting that code.
I respectfully disagree, I think this project improves the neighborhood, and there's enough ways to address the parking, I'm not sure why we're debating this.
I'm, I'm personally, uh, kinda curious, as far as the neighborhood, who and what their fears were on parking for people that don't even live there yet, 'cause this is a cul-de-sac. Are, are they afraid that people are gonna spill out onto the other streets, is that the concerns you're hearing, I'm not...
No, I think the concerns are similar to my own concern, which is, it's the parking that's gonna be caused by this project, given the fact over time, people have kids, they add more cars, you have rental units in the back, we're gonna exacerbate, we wanna prevent the issue from happening that we already have in the neighborhood from happening again. So I think this is a preventative measure rather than some sort of a solution for the existing parking issues.
But for a community or a neighborhood that doesn't exist yet, I guess I'm not quite sure I understand that. If it was people that already lived there, I, I guess maybe I would, I'd be a little more sympathetic to those fears or concerns, but these are future buyers that will choose to buy a house there. And then I think it goes back to something that I've said for fourteen years on this council, um, I don't know the, I don't know the market, I'm not a developer, uh, I think these guys know what sells, that's why they do what they do, um, and we can vilify them all we want, but if we wanna improve neighborhoods and build and, and be compliant with the amount of housing that we're supposed to have and do it in a nice way, I think we have to have a balance of encouraging that development, and I, I think this looks like a nice, very nice project with very large lot sizes. I mean, it's, it, it looks good, I just, I, I don't know, but I, I'm, you know where I'm coming from in terms of Mission Creek and Mission Trails, where our city manager stood up in front of that existing council and said, "Please do not override our code", and we did, and now we have those two communities we can't even get fire apparatus into. So we need to be careful when we monkey with things up here as a council, and I'm not saying that's occurring, that's my fear in, in when we say we wanna override or we're not gonna listen to the code standards, we have to do that. That, to me, is a public safety issue, so if, if you're not in favor of the project as it is, like, maybe you're not in favor, I don't know if we have the votes to move it or if we need to bring it back, I don't know.
Excuse me, I, I guess what I'd like to point out, and, and you did refer to this, Councilman Popescu, that, um, some of these items are actually code items, not all of them are. The project as it stands right now, and as staff has been very, um, dutiful in making sure it's compliant with all of the city codes as it stands right now, including parking. And our perspective is, if there is something that we can do to help address the concerns that still complies with code and still, um, doesn't deter from the project as it stands right now, we're fully willing to do that, to the extent that it's possible. And, uh, the conversations with Public Works and, and with staff, there may be opportunities to do that. Uh, I, I'm sorry if I misled you, it wasn't my intention to say, yes, we can do it on every lot, our intent is to comply to the degree that it is possible. We are currently compliant and actually exceed the available parking just by virtue of street parking. So, uh, at, at this point, our perspective is, this project is very approvable, if, uh, the council sees, uh, a need to alter city development code, and that every single-family home project in the future is gonna need to acco, uh, accommodate four, or five, or six, or seven parking stalls per house, that's a serious issue to, but that's not what you're doing tonight. Uh, we have a compliant project right now, and to the degree that we can help address your issues, I think we're willing to do that.
So, help me understand this, to make sure we're all clear on the same page, are you willing to widen any of the driveways?
I, I think widening of the driveways is not a problem except for on the cul-de-sac street.
Okay, well, I, and I stated that if you're able to do that and make an adjustment for the cul-de-sac street, I'm, I'm okay with that, so I'm not sure where the confusion is here. If you believe you can widen every driveway, other than the, what, two streets on the cul-de-sac, I don't see a problem with that.
I, I do kinda need to...
I know, you have a boss who wants you not to spend a lot of money on this project, I understand that.
No, he means he's got an engineer.
I, I, I'm sorry, that, that, that's not really the issue, the issue does come down to, does that widening of the driveway and providing an additional, uh, space in front of the house, does it violate any other codes? And if, if that is not a problem for you, then we don't even...
I, I don't believe it does, okay? But nothing prevents you from exceeding what the code is. They clearly did it at other houses, multiple houses, and I think that you can easily do it in this project, without removing any houses. As it is, the residents do have an issue with how many houses are being built there, we're not gonna discuss that.
Right.
We're trying to make the project nicer, and so accommodates the residents, 'cause we all gonna live there for a long time, and we're gonna deal, deal with aftermath. The Mayor Duper made an excellent point, you know, I'm sure every other project met code, but yet, years later, we're having issues, so...
Right.
I think there's ways that we can continue to meet code, perhaps even exceed it in this case, and I think everybody goes home happy. I, I, I don't wanna have to not approve this project, I wanna see it come to fruition, all we need to do is make a few, which I think are minor changes.
I just, I would like to add something, I don't know if, if you're all familiar with the Housing Accountability Act. In essence, it provides that if a project complies with the applicable objective general plan, zoning, and subdivision standards and criteria, including design review standards, it cannot be denied unless there are specific findings made, and those findings would include, to deny such a project if it otherwise meets those, um, requirements, the city must find, one, that the project would have a specific adverse impact on public health or safety, and that there is, and two, both, there is no feasible method to mitigate or avoid this impact satisfactorily, other than by disapproving the project. So there are, um, specific findings you have to make to deny a project that otherwise complies with all applicable zoning and design codes, okay? And staff is stating that it does, so, okay, just to let you know.
All right, you want, we wanna clarify that motion?
The motion is though, the project gets approved, and we're making forward mitigations and conditions that driveways be widened on the east, uh, I guess...
To the extent applicable.
On the east, I'm sorry?
To the extent that it can be, maybe.
Uh, I think we've clarified from the applicant that he's able to do so for most of the houses, with the exception of the cul-de-sac. Um, and I think that, that's, I know, I'm satisfied with, uh, making, so it's a motion, we improve the project with conditions that the widen, we widen the driveways on all the, uh, all the, the houses that are facing west, with the exception of the ones on the cul-de-sac. And I think the other issues are not even up for debate, which is the lighting and the driveway, I mean, the sidewalk, that's a modified sidewalk.
I, I wasn't clear, are those other two items you say part of your motion as well? The sidewalk and the lighting?
Yes, correct.
The decomposed granite walkway.
And can we confirm that we're going to add the other conditions that staff presented that came from Planning Commission as well to this motion?
Correct.
The ones that were not struck.
Correct, just making sure.
Correct, yes.
Okay, and as, and with the tie-up, that all this meets our, our current code in the city?
It does, but nothing prevents the applicant from exceeding it, so I wanna make sure that's clear as well, thank you.
So it, um, if that can be done and it meets code, so this is all conditioned on those, those adjustments meeting code, just to be clear.
Yes, but it's also clear to me that the applicant stated that he is able to do those things. Uh, like I said, I don't wanna find myself looking at a project that was not what we approved, so I wanna make sure that, what are, my motion approves a project that clearly indicates the changes that we want to it.
That's why I think we need to be crystal clear on the motion.
Yes, I, I, um, I mean, even if, even if the developer was willing to do any and all of that, it can't violate code.
I don't think any of the things that I'm proposing violates code.
Well, we don't, we don't know, so...
Okay.
So I just wanna be clear for the records, because these things come back and we go, gee, we weren't really clear on what the motion was. Um, this motion is conditioned upon meeting code.
That's, it's almost redundant, but obviously it's gonna meet code, but we're asking for a few changes, which may exceed the code, not violate it, so maybe I need to make that clear.
I, I'm not sure I understand what that means. Exceed or violate, I'm, I'm not sure we're using the terminology correctly here.
Yeah, I don't know what exceed the code, if you, if you violate the code, that's a code violation.
If it complies with the code, is that what you're saying?
Okay, let's clarify this once and for all. I move the ten track map two-two dash two-zero six-four, it's six-four, and precise plan design two-two two-six-six with the following condition, we put in a modified sidewalk on the east end of the property...
West.
West, west end, of additional lighting, decorative lighting along that edge, and we widen all the, the driveways along the east side of the street, with the exception of the two houses or three houses on the cul-de-sac.
As long as it meets the code?
It's gonna be obvious that it's gonna meet the code, otherwise you couldn't approve something that doesn't meet code.
Then say it.
I stated my motion, I think my motion's pretty clear. If, if the staff comes back and says, "We doesn't meet code," then we have a different discussion.
No, we're approving it right now.
Well...
So what you're asking is for them to do that, but you're not willing to say, "As long as it meets the code requirement."
It's a contingent approval, which is not the same thing as a blanket approval.
But if, if for... But if for some reason it comes back saying that those issues don't meet code, then it needs to be brought back.
We can add that to the condition.
If it dies, it dies.
Second.
Okay, so the motion is without the comment that it meets our code.
I don't believe that's needed.
I think that is understood. If it doesn't meet code, then you don't, you don't proceed, period.
I'm not going to vote then on that. I can't do that.
Okay, then I propose a substantive motion that someone design this thing and bring it back.
Second.
Okay, we have a motion, a second to bring it back to the next calendared agenda, or June 11th. Okay? Madam Clerk, we have a first and a second on a motion to continue this item.
I'll take your vote, please. Motion carried to continue this item.
Thank you very much. Okay, moving on to the consent calendar. Now, item 3I is to approve the contract with the Sheriff's Department, and out of abundance of caution, I'm going to recuse myself from that. So I'd like us to pull that and do that separately. So if we can move the consent calendar, I can get a motion to move everything except for 3I or anything else that you all might want to pull.
I'll move minus item number seven, you said?
3I.
3I, sorry.
No, no problem.
Second.
Okay, Madam Clerk, we have a first and a second for the consent calendar minus that one item.
As stated, motions to approve the consent calendar, with the exception of item 3I, please vote.
Thank you very much. Turn it over to Dr. Rigsby to...
I'll move item 3I.
If I might just add something. The initial item was to approve Amendment A to the sheriff's contract, but then what the county wanted to do was separate out the portion of the contract that's for code enforcement and animal control services. So it's just a separate contract. Amount is the same. So I just wanted to clarify that.
Okay. My motion stands.
I'll second, just general comment.
It complies with what you said.
I just wanted to commend the university. I think the fact that we're approving the $7 million, you know, basically contract with the Sheriff's Department, and they're willing to pay almost $2 million of it, that's more revenue than any other businesses in town. So I really commend them for stepping up and doing that. And it's really amazing because despite the fact that they give us thousands of jobs, education, and healthcare, and many other benefits, the fact that they're helping us pay for that, it's actually incredible. And it wasn't always, it was unfortunately contingent, and I think it's great that they're paying for it. And maybe we need to visit, revisit how that officer's being used, but that's a different discussion at a different time. Thank you.
Motion is to approve Agenda Item 3I as amended. Please vote.
Thank you very much. Moving on to, we have nothing in old business, moving on to new business, Item 5A, and this is bringing back a presentation on our Fire Department Therapy Dog Program.
Good evening, Mayor and Council. Thank you for your time. With me tonight are members of the Loma Linda Fire Department and specifically members of a committee that was established to review and bring back information regarding a therapy dog for the Fire Department. In the April 9th meeting, we had a good discussion about a therapy dog, specifically a dog that could be provided for the Fire Department. And after discussion, we were directed to research it and bring back some information at this meeting. Following that meeting, I met with a member of my administration staff and with the labor group. We had a discussion on how to proceed and agreed that the best process moving forward was to establish a committee to gather all the information to bring it back. I gave some general direction and encouraged them to gather all the information, keep me abreast, and be prepared to present tonight. And so without any further ado, I'm going to bring up members of the committee who are going to present their findings.
All right, thank you, thank you, thank you for allowing us to present the idea of a therapy dog to members of the council. The fellows that you see behind me are all members of the committee that were chosen to participate and come up with the best, I guess, package and solution to some of the ailments that we're finding within our department. Nick Hernandez represents the labor side, I represent administration, and then we collectively came together and kind of broke it up and created a presentation and areas that each member has some expertise in. So I may refer to them if there's some questions that I can't answer. So without further ado, we have a presentation here that we'd like to present to you. First of all, being a public servant is, you know, kind of a collective idea that we all are in agreement that it's something that we're very proud of. For most of us, it's probably the second most important thing in our lives, first being There's no greater purpose for us than serving others, but that doesn't come without some unintended consequences that Mayor Duper, I'm sure, is familiar with, Casey. Most people see maybe three traumatic incidents within their lives, you know? Maybe their parents passing away, they come across a car accident. Public servants, law, and fire have upwards of 600 on the average. So that takes its toll on people. So we're going to go over the idea of having a station dog, what its benefits would be for us within the department, our members, as well as the community. So let me see if I can work this thing. So why do we need a station dog? Being a peer counselor for some traumatic incidents, firefighter, paramedic, DeYoung and I have been given the opportunity to work with therapy dogs. And oftentimes, you know, we come across dogs in public service, they're usually service dogs, a service animal that is tied to a specific handler. However, that's not really what we need, although many of our members qualify for service dogs, so inevitably, we're probably getting a dog at one point or another, myself included. We actually have a very high incidence of emotional trauma that guys have to endure. We have people that go out multiple times. We spent over $100,000 this year alone on it. But why do we need a station dog? A station dog kind of reduces the amount of stress that people have in the workplace. It's the only thing that is preemptive. We have EAP that you're familiar with, that if somebody has a major issue, whether it's drugs, alcohol, sex addiction, whatever, some of the unintended consequences that public service faces, we have EAP. Well, you know, as you're probably aware, that very few people take advantage of that. So less than 10% of the people that need it actually use it. A therapy dog is one of the only resources that actually reduces stress preemptively. We have a little video here to talk about, if you can play that, sir. Pay attention closely to kind of, this is something that came up in our peer support counseling. Wait. No, that guy doesn't have a mustache. Very simplistic idea, but you get the picture. A dog has a profound impact on people's emotional well-being, far more than a service dog, like I was saying, with that peer support training that we experienced. This is where that video came from. And seeing the way that a dog impacts somebody's stress levels and things, it was remarkable to see, and we kind of talked about it, it was like, man, that would be something really awesome if we could apply that within our department. Now, fast forward 10 years, now it's something that's common practice. So why does everyone need a station dog? First responder, physical health, mental health. You know, firefighters are more likely to die by suicide than in the line of duty now. I don't know if it's a generational thing or what, but it is impacting people profoundly. It, we have, like I said, we've had multiple people go out for emotional trauma, and it's probably not the last time. This is something that would help circumvent that with an overall kind of wellness program. Difference between a service dog and a station dog, you know, very different than a typical canine that you would see in arson investigation or law enforcement or any kind of task-related working dog. This dog is essentially, only purpose is to provide emotional support for the entire staff, not one person. So a very different idea than the typical service dog. It would live at the station, and it would be for all personnel, not just myself, not him, but for everyone. It would essentially be the fire station dog. So does it work? You know, so we went and we were tasked with finding out what's the best solution. We went to various departments and started with the one that kind of pioneered the idea of having a facility dog or a fire station dog, because we had our own ideas of what that was, you know, whether it be, you know, from a cartoon or a movie that we saw as kids, oh, Dalmatian, this and that. It was like, well, reality is very different, but the concept is the same. Heartland Fire Department down in San Diego was the first department in the nation to kind of capture the idea of having it be a department wellness program versus just a dog that was, like in New York, they have fire dogs, but they're just a stray dog, somebody's dog, somebody that they just kind of take over, but wasn't part of any organized plan from the department and from the members. They did that. They developed an entire program, entire system, and it worked. So they ran over, they've done it for about five years now. Total acceptance by personnel with demonstrable benefits. Everyone sees the dog as a member of the department. So initially, there was a lot of questions of allergies, biting, all these different problems that are nonissues. So they were able to kind of answer those questions to us and provide some resources and some reinforcement that it was actually a beneficial thing. And the things that we were concerned about, they were initially concerned too, and they're actually moot points. Nationwide results, now it's taking place kind of all over the nation. Rancho has one, Ontario has one, San Diego has multiple, and countless departments are in the line to get one because it's something that is very low cost with huge benefits for the members. How does it work? So no one has to ask the dog for help. The dog is trained, not just obedience training, not just therapy training, but specific fire station conditioning training as well, that it automatically goes to the person that has elevated cortisol levels. And they've stoned through scientific evidence that it reduces that stress level by up to 70% just within 10 minutes of being around the dog. Unconditional love, reduces sick leave, therapy sessions. It's, like I said, it's the only program that kind of preempts an issue before it becomes one. And it assists with common health issues, cardiovascular disease, blood pressure, increased heart rate, stress, anxiety, and the list goes on. So then we came across, where do we get this dog? So we were offered dogs of donations and, you know, there was go to a shelter, go to breeders, all these different programs, and we went and we were tasked with figuring out what other people have done that is successful, and could we apply that for us? So one of the options was getting a train station dog, you can go through a couple different resources there. Getting a failed service dog, now what is that? A failed service dog? It sounds like something that we don't want, but it actually is, turns out to be a very good resource. These service dogs are typically for like blind people or a task-related dog that has a specific role, like a working dog. They have to be very, almost aloof with everyone except for their handler, and a dog that's too social doesn't qualify, so they're failed. That's essentially what we need. So that actually becomes a very viable option for us, a dog that wants to love everyone, not just one person. Or we can find a puppy and actually train them through a proved trainer, but there's different costs associated with each of those options. So the canine-carrying angels, that was one resource, certifications, first responder therapy dogs, Star Puppy, all these different things. Fantastic option. So they've never had a returned dog. Dogs are bred in the program and come certified as a family history for every approved dog. It's been around for 12 years. Heartland recommends this. It was their first station dog. It was their number one option in experience. The downside is a little bit more expensive, but it is a great option. Donated dog, like we talked about, the failed service dogs, they're not truly donated, but the cost of the dog isn't, it's just absorbed within the training. So that seems to be the best financial option. It's the lowest cost, and it very much aligns with the values and the purpose of our program. So that was kind of the solution that this group came with as our best option moving forward. The dogs have come with all certificates and completion of all aspects of the program. Like I said, they have the obedience training, the therapy-specific training, and the Fire Department conditioning and specific training to our needs. And it is, like I said, the lowest cost. Next, how would we implement this? So we choose a route with your recommendation, with the fire chief, city manager. The committee's moving forward, making the recommendation of the lower-cost option because we think that aligns very much with our values and it would suit our needs. Meet and greet, have the dog meet with the crews, visit stations, visit indoor/outdoor facilities, and acclimate it to the fire station. All the committee members would then participate in some of the training and then teach that training to the rest of the crews and implement our policies and the things that we've already collectively put together. And ultimately, then we would go live. Day-to-day operations, a lot of the intricacies that we thought were going to be cumbersome or that we had to think outside the box and kind of, they said at the end of the day, guys, you're overthinking it, just like we did. It's a dog. It's a dog that provides love and care for the people that need it most. So the pass down, we would get, we would take care of the things just like they do. Has a dog eaten yet? The members of the committee are tasked with different functions, you know, go to the bathroom, all these, any upcoming appointments, there's people that are tasked with different roles and assignments. You know, dog will be available for all incidents, debriefings, and critical calls, and just day-to-day interactions. Any open house, station tours, or anything with public, the station dog will be leashed and under control by approved personnel until deemed appropriate. There's a binder that we've started to create with a list of any vaccines, diet commands, vet appointments, primary and secondary handlers, contacts, et cetera. So we're essentially duplicating a system that's already been perfected. Cost, it's actually a no cost, it's actually a negative cost if you look at it appropriately. Like I said, we've spent in excess of $100,000... Like I said, we've spent in excess of $100,000 this year in, um, leave for emotion-related issues. This eliminates that. Every time that we have somebody that's gone, we have to replace them, pay overtime for them. Sick leave, um, uh, EAP, therapy, all these different things that we have to accommodate to keep our people whole, this is preempts that. Total cost of the program is $7,500. Very minor in comparison to, you know, you have somebody go out for a few days, that absorbs that cost. So we anticipate and looking at the, the, the history of the various departments that we researched, their overall sick use, EAP usage, all these other components have drastically gone down. So it's, like I said, it becomes a negative cost item. Community benefits. Not only does it benefit the members, it benefits the community. Every kid that visits the fire station asks for our fire dog. Do you guys have a Dalmatian? No, we want one, but we don't have one. The dog that we would have wouldn't be a Dalmatian, it's a little cliche, uh, would be more specific to our needs, it would end up being a Labrador. Social media engagement. Oftentimes, any kind of, um, the community cares more about the fire dog than they do the firefighters. Um, so it gets a, uh, the community very much takes ownership of the dog and loves the dog and wants to engage with the dog and it ultimately becomes a part of the community. Overall, it aligns very much with the values of our city, our department, our department head, the city manager. Wellness, mental health is important, not just physical, but mental. Um, we got to prepare these guys to combat things day in, day out, so they can have a nice, long career and a healthy retirement. It's a small ask. Ultimately, that's some resources, but, uh, if you have any questions, I'll pass it over to Chief Barker and hopefully these guys can answer them, uh, if I haven't already done so. Thank you.
Yeah, I just want to close with a few of just comments on our, on our overall, um, health and wellness, uh, program and kind of how this fits in with what, um, my vision has been since I've been here and working with Nate when he was originally the labor rep and now with Nick and as a department. Um, you know, prior to here, I used to work for the city of San Bernardino and for those of you, no surprise, the city of San Bernardino is a little different than the city of Loma Linda. Um, so when, you know, Nate mentions, you know, on average 600 calls, I'm probably double that in my career. And, um, in that time, you know, we, we talked about the risk of firefighters and, and all the calls I ran and all the incidents I was on, you know, I never really feared for my safety. I never knew anybody, I can't tell anybody who's ever died in a fire or died, um, like that, but you know, I've had people who have gotten cancer, who have had heart problems, um, who've committed suicide, who have, um, left the fire service early due to, um, psychological issues, um, and big and small, um, things that you, you don't, you used to not think would bother people and they do. And that's just the, the way of the, the career. And, um, obviously working for a bankrupt city, there wasn't a lot I could do then. And so when I got here, um, I still recognize the need that, I mean, fire service, even though we recognize that we didn't do a lot, um, to really address those problems. And, and there's a lot to do and I always kind of refer to it as the toolbox. And you know, you open your toolbox and there's a lot of tools and someone might say, um, what, what tool do I need and what can I get rid of? And you can't get rid of any of them because they all have specific needs to accomplish a certain goal. And, um, you know, I noticed when we got here, we didn't have a very good, um, critical incident response planned, um, as far as, you know, counseling and stuff. And so we made, we got a contract with the counseling team who is kind of an industry standard in our area for, for dealing with that. Worked with a labor group like Nate had mentioned, um, on, um, peer counseling and getting peer counseling program going and getting some of our personnel sent to that training to, um, provide that. Working on the chaplain program together with the labor group, um, recognizing that if you, you read stuff, um, on mental and physical health, the, the, one of the greatest things you can do is exercise. I'm a huge proponent of exercise and being out there. Um, these guys will tell you that, um, I'm 100% supporting them getting their workouts in, buying them fitness equipment, buying them necessary things for recovery. Um, and, um, city manager, sometimes not understanding some of the things I'm asked for and wanting, but understands that the overall goal is to make sure, um, our personnel are taken care of. Nate mentions, um, being, um, families, you know, I just became a grandpa last year and I'll tell you, I think, um, kids are great, grandkids are even better. And I want all these guys to get to a point where they get to see their grandkids and be healthy. And, um, I tell them, um, Nate can tell you, um, any of these guys who have promoted recently that, um, my, my number one leadership trait, I tell them that I like to see is caring about people, genuinely caring about people. And I believe that in working, um, to support people's physical and mental health is one of the keys that we can do pretty easily to accomplish that. And so this becomes another tool. Um, a lot of that stuff we mentioned, like, um, Chief Boucher showed in the slides, there's a lot of the stuff is you have to interact. You have to go to the counseling team, you have to go to a peer counselor, you have to go work out, you have to go, you have to go and do it. And if, you, sometimes you don't want to, and if you get into a spot, maybe you don't, whereas this, this helps you from even getting there. This, this kind of gets you, um, kind of that self-care without you even seeking it. And so, um, I'm a huge supporter of it. This evening, what we're looking for, um, obviously this came through the council, so, um, looking for direction back, but what, uh, my plan is, is we budgeted this for next year's budget. Um, so once the budget's approved, July comes, the program, um, unless otherwise, um, different from the council up here will go into effect, um, in July and we will begin getting the, uh, service dog and working that direction. Yeah, so I think that kind of fills in the full story and open any questions.
Just, uh, I'm, I'm very proud of the work that you guys have all done and putting it together. And you basically took on, uh, the model that was kind of out there and, and worked together and have a committee going and all those cool things and put it into place. So it sounds like a great deal. I hope it's super, super successful. And, um, be excited to see when you get the dog. Any other comments?
Will you bring it to city council meetings regularly?
Awesome. Well, thank you guys very much for the presentation. Yes, sir.
What's the bottom line?
I'm sorry. Um, 7,500 for the dog. We're averaging, um, about $500 startup and then including food and I think that over a year's time, 1,200 roughly?
Uh, so it'll be, so do you have insurance? The booster vaccines will be about $120 a year. That's for just an annual exam and then just to get the boosters, the dog most likely, because it's going to be one or three years old, will come with, um, its initial vaccines and all that, um, insurances when the dog gets older every year. Uh, but it'll start off on about, it'll cover up to $15,000 for any accidental and all that stuff. And that will be, it'll start off around, a one-year-old dog, about $500, $300 a month and probably go up about like five, five percent here, just as.
So a startup, maybe $8,500 an annual of maybe about 1,200 to 1,500 dollars moving forward.
Not a lot of money.
Not a lot of money.
And, uh, how do you deal with, um, allergies?
Anybody a allergy expert?
So that was, uh, one of our biggest concerns was, okay, what are, what are the things that, you know, do we get one of the doodles? And that was ultimately shot down and they gave us a big explanation why. Um, there was a handful of people, when this program was initially pioneered in, in Heartland that just didn't want the dog. They, they liked their system, they didn't want any changes. So there was a handful of guys that said, I have allergies. And what ultimately the department did was said, okay, well, we'll go down and get you allergy tested. Come to find out, about 75% of the people didn't show up and the rest of them didn't have allergies. So, um, if they do have allergies, we have two stations and typically people that think they have allergies to dogs aren't actually allergic to dog, they're allergic to some other byproduct.
If you get the dog, my wife will not be applying for a job.
Okay, no problem.
She's allergic to dogs. But if that's the only one, you're in good shape.
All right, congratulations. Thank you. Looking forward to it.
I just had a general question, but I don't know if you have the answer. Uh, you said that other fire departments are already using them?
Yes.
And you, you mentioned Chino? What, what?
Rancho, Ontario, I don't think Chino has yet, right?
So many departments have service dogs, but the ones that are implementing a therapy dog or a, a facility dog like us, Rancho, Ontario, um, La Mesa, um, Alcoa.
Yeah, the Heart, the Heartland Fire Department, which is a, which is a group of several cities, Alcoa, um, I can't remember the other. Lakeside. Yeah, so that department, they, they were kind of the ones who started kind of the whole, whole thing, did a lot of the research and then from there it's been growing.
Do you know whether Colton, San Bernardino, Ukaipe, Highland, or any of the other cities are pursuing this?
I would say, I haven't heard of them at this point, um, but I have a feeling, like even the, when we started researching the fact that Rancho and Ontario, and in fact, we, uh, one thing I forgot to mention, we, we did reach out to our risk management and they said, yeah, it doesn't really affect them at all. They mentioned the city of West Covina also, that's under, um, our JPI, they're also looking at one. So I, I, I view this as something that'll probably be growing quite a bit in the area.
And there's, I know you mentioned statistics about the amount that's going to save and additional expenses that are related to folks who are taking time off. Is, is that, do you have data that shows that those departments in implementing this therapy dog has been able to show that there's significant savings on that end?
To the PowerPoint, there's resources there that specify that. And we reviewed, uh, what was it? Alcoa's data that showed their trend line. It was like, wow, that was pretty profound. Ultimately, if it does the same thing that we anticipated doing, it's going to do a heck of a lot better than $7,500.
And I know you mentioned there, there's a possibility of someone donating a dog versus buying one. And you're concerned that a donation may not be as successful as purchasing one?
We looked at that, that's a good question. So the donating dog, the option that we specified in there is actually the, the route that we're going. It's donated from a failed service dog. But one of the ritual that brought this whole thing about was a chaplain that was going to donate a dog, it's a breeder to us to implement this. Well, what we found with, uh, talking to Alcoa, and they were like, that's how we got our first dog. And it was actually far more costly because that dog wasn't specifically, uh, vetted for any health concerns. So it's had two knee replacements, a hip replacement, et cetera. Whereas the dogs that we've chosen, the route that we've chosen, have been vetted through five generations of healthy lineage so that we don't have those unintended consequences down the road.
So you're not looking for someone to donate, you're going to purchase and purchase? Okay, okay, thank you.
Thank you for two dogs now?
Yeah. No. So, so most places start with one dog and kind of a pilot and start seeing how it goes. And then, you know, if, if there's a need, we can always revisit, but the goal right now is one dog.
Unless you want to give us two.
We can, we can get one for you, Jarv. Do you want a dog? No?
Okay.
Thank you.
All right, um, moving on to 5B, which is a resolution to approve our five-year CIP. Ongoing, forever five-year CIP.
Yes, so this is, um, item that's come every year's, uh, for, for, for new council members. Uh, every year, the, um, SBCTA, Samuel County Transportation Authority require that we have to come up with a five-year CIP capital improvement program for roadway rehabilitation to utilize the, uh, Measure I, which is the half cent sale tax. Okay, so what's important is, is what we plan for this next fiscal year. The year two, three, and four, it can be changes, okay? So for next fiscal year, uh, what we plan to do is, is that one in pink, which is Redlands Boulevard from, from Anderson to Mountain View, Richardson from Redlands to, uh, the freeway, which is the, the city boundary. We're going to grind and pave and overlay with rubberized asphalt.
And can you do something about whatever is under that grinding and paving? Because Redlands Boulevard is just a mess.
Right, so, so we're going to do a leveling course first, we're going to level it off, make sure that it's all level and, and we pave over.
Yeah, it's more than just a grind.
Yes, yes, it'd be level first.
Yeah, there's.
But what's happening, like I mentioned before, we have a groundwater, uh, down below, so sometime is the, especially around the manhole is settled, so we can take care of those first. Uh, next is going to be, um, this, this subdivision. Last year, we completed all these subdivisions, so now we are moving east for the area east of Beaumont, south of Lawton, from here all the way to George and all the way to, uh, to Beaumont, up on Whittier from Lawton to Beaumont. And, uh, north of George will be grind overlay, south of George will be service seal because the street's still in good condition. We're also going to do, uh, Beaumont Avenue from Mountain View to, uh, to Brenmore. And if you notice right now, we, the road is under construction because of the water tank. And then they put in a water main from Mountain View to where the driveway to the water tank is, so that the contractor for the tank will repair the pavement section within where the water main is and the city will come and grind overlay the street. We also, we will be working with, uh, SBCTA and get the development impact fee funding for widening California Street from Barton Road to where the Lennar end on the west side of the street. So we're also going to widen the street on the west side and then grind pave the street. The plans are completed, we're just waiting for, we're working with Edison to relocate three power pole, uh, on the west side of the street. So this is our plan for next fiscal year. And all this project is not just funded by Measure I, we also combine it with SB1, which is the, uh, the half cent, uh, uh, no, it's, it's a gas tax. SB1 is gas tax. Okay, so we combined the two funding and so also developing the impact fee for California Street for widening it, so to do all these projects. And then the following year, can you zoom it back a little bit? The following year, I think is the, the one in, 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 uh, in yellows. And then the following that is purple and red and orange and so forth. But the street can be changed as, as we look at the condition of the street every year. So staff recommended the city council approve, adopt the, uh, council bill R-2024-16, approving the city Measure I five-year CIP, uh, capital improvement plans. That's in my report.
Move the item? Second.
Sorry. Motion is to, motion is to adopt council bill R-2024-16, a resolution adopting the Measure I five-year capital improvement plan for fiscal year 2024, fiscal year 2024, '25 through fiscal year 2028, '29. Motion carried, thank you.
I want, uh, to comment that District One and District Four got a lot. And District Five welcomes you to have all the money for the, for the pavement improvement for the next year.
But it all gets done every eight years, we rotate through the entire city.
I'm just, I'm just pointing out that I'm magnanimous.
Okay.
District Five says you're welcome to it. You're part of Loma Linda, thank you.
I, I have a, I, I just have a comment and it's, and it's, it's something that was predicted when we, uh, again, I know this is old news, but when we got forced into this district thing and we got sued and we acquiesced and even our own analyst said, over time, what happens is council people start referring to districts and districts and districts. Every single one of us represents the entire city. And I, I'm not, I'm just taking it, not based on what you said, but I, I got to get this out. We all represent the city for the best and good of the entire community here. And I, I really, I hope we don't really get in, into all that district stuff too much. I just hope. don't really get in, into all that district stuff too much. I just hope.
I was only pointing it out because it's absurd. Because it's absurd.
I know, but just, I just hope. Anyway, okay. Okay, reports of council members.
Just some general comments. I got a chance to attend the SCAG conference, I guess a week and a half ago, and it was always a very good opportunity to network with other cities and learn about how they do things, and how much they spend on things, and how they run things, and boy, it's an amazing opportunity to talk to people outside of Inland Empire, and you get a year full about how things are done in other cities. One of the highlights for me was spending a lot of time with ESRI. It's going to be my passion to try to bring in more development here, especially on the commercial side, and they do an amazing job of aggregating a lot of data that I think we can use to help educate the development community on that. Found out that they also provide some services for grant writing and getting grants, which is great, and hoping maybe we can get a grant to help pay for the fire dog. That'd be awesome. Obviously, continue to work with folks from the SBCTA, Omni, all those entities impact us greatly in many ways. One of the things that I forgot to actually mention to Jarb, and I guess I can ask him, but it was brought to my attention by Omni Trans, that Southern Pacific Railroad is intending on trying to add a third rail line through the city.
You mean Union Pacific Railroad?
Union Pacific, yeah, I'm sorry. Have you heard of that? Okay, because that, that would be huge. I can't imagine that that's going to impact our city significantly, but anyway. And sometimes you pick up on those things and you need to verify how true they are, but that's something that got my attention, which would impact us greatly, so hopefully we'll keep an eye on that. Other than that, good opportunity, we'll continue to network with many folks on all those agencies. SBCTA is especially important. I think there's opportunities for us to collaborate, to address some of the traffic issues that we have. Obviously, networking with adjacent cities on trying to deal with crime and homelessness is also important, so this, this conference is an opportunity to meet with those folks, and we'll have an opportunity again at City-County Conference coming up this week. Thank you.
Okay, yes, ma'am. I'm sorry.
It's okay. So one of the things I've realized, visiting some of the meetings with staff around here, is there's really concern, well, my concern is for the employee morale. I don't know it's to the level that, you know, we may know what's really going on here as city council, so one of the things I want to see, and maybe have Jarb create, is an overall org chart with all of the individual, down to the individual level of the individual employee, what, what positions we have, what their titles are, what the duties that they're actually doing, what the pay is that they have, especially if we're going to negotiation. I think in like one week to see, like in, like all of us to see what that org chart looks like, and I'm seriously considering next, next month, preparing for you guys, or in the meantime, an anonymous employee engagement survey, so we can see what the employees, their ideas for improving efficiency, their ideas for what's working, what's not. I think we have to engage, just like with the city, but even within our own, of how people are feeling. I've heard there's a lot of concern with negotiations, that we may lose a major part of our workforce. So I'm very worried, that's why I wanted to just see that we get an org chart, we get on this kind of page of really what's happening, we get our hands on the pulse.
Okay, like I forward the organization charts to you, and, but it's going to be very difficult to me to bring every, every people, the pay rate, the job function is, I, I can't have that done by.
A week?
No.
Jarb, I've seen the org chart, the one you sent me, you're like five positions on the org chart.
And I've been doing it for 15 years.
I know, this is not sustainable.
But again, my, my job is, is.
IT Director.
As a city manager, is, is to balance the budget. I, I try very hard to balance the budget. Yes, it's, it costs a lot to run the city. I, I know that, and the city council know that, but that's why they know that I'm very frugal and, and my hand are tied. But we, we can only spend what we have, whatever revenue we have, we have to live within our means, so, so.
Yes, but then we have to know that, we have to see that, because having you as an IT director, like, I don't know if you went to school to be IT, like, when I'm looking down this org chart, and you're like five positions, it's very concerning to me, because, you know, these are like special skills of directors and managements of these things. We can't just keep cutting and cutting and doing this, and I understand the budget, but we have to come as city council, we have to come to the realization of, you know what? Then we, we have to find another way. If finances are tight, I mean, I don't even know what we just gave to the sheriffs in approval for their pay raise, right? Because the contract we just awarded them?
2.7% increase.
That's what the sheriff's got?
Yes.
Over their three years or six years?
No, 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 no. The, we don't, we don't deal with the labor contract itself, we only deal with Schedule A, which include, in addition to labor, we include the insurance, we include the cars, the camera, so the overall total increase is 2.7%.
It's 2.7% from, from, for?
From last year to this year.
Since 2019 till now, like, isn't it a six year?
No, 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 no. From last year to this year, from next year, this year to next year.
It's usually estimated to be about 5% increase a year, and this year it came in kind of low, although it sounds like maybe next year they're going to tack on some things that they didn't tack on this year. So although the sheriff does a pretty good job of explaining a lot of the benefits, one of the benefits that, that he likes to talk about is that the county absorbs all of our liability. So if you look at how LA County does this, they don't, they don't do that. So according to our sheriff, if you contract in LA County and something bad happens, the city then eats that liability. In our model here, we pay into that as a percentage of the contract, and all that liability gets absorbed by the county. But it's not just for the deputies that work here, it's also, they factor in the cost of the dispatchers, the clerical staff, the administrative staff, and then on top of all that, and this is out of the sheriff's control, the county tacks on some of their fees too, because of course, you know, it's going to be the county. So, but typically, the, the costs go up, are estimated about 5% every year for these, for the cities, and this year it was actually fairly low. So I know a couple of cities were celebrating that. One in particular took, took, took the opportunity to actually add some staffing because it was lower than, than what it normally is, but the problem is that we don't even know what that's going to be, and every year leading up to that renewal, it's a, it's a big kind of guessing game, and it depends on a lot of factors. So this year, they're charging us for the bodyboard cameras, they're charging us for, there's a, a new dispatch telephone reporting unit that's getting charged to us, and a couple of other stuff, not just us, but all the contract cities, so. But that, and then the labor negotiations, when they happen, see, the problem, not the problem, but most of the labor on the sheriff's department side is getting ready to wrap up a contract, so there's not much left in terms of raises. So for the next year or so, we probably won't see a lot. If they do get raises at the next contract renewal, then some of that will get passed along into the Schedule A as well. Sorry, that's long and short of it, but that's.
I think to bring it back to Jarb, Jarb, I think it's unacceptable to request that within at least a week or two weeks max, that we need to see an org chart.
I'm sorry, I will be on vacation next week to go home and celebrate my mom's 96 years old birthday, and only one week, and, and so, no, I can't have it done by.
If I might interject for a minute, I think we're, we're getting beyond the, the scope of what reports are. None of this is agendized, so council members can ask for a quick point of information or something like that, but we can't get into discussions. We're getting into labor negotiations, which are not, should not be discussed in open session. Those matters are for closed session, so we're getting a little beyond that. We're also, you know, this is a city manager form of government. The council gives direction to the city manager, and then the city manager manages the staff and the department heads. And it's, it's laid out in our code that the city manager is, is the one that makes those day-to-day decisions and deals with the employees. So anything that, of concern that the council has should be addressed through the city manager and not to individual employees. That's just the city manager form of government.
Yes, and that's what I'm requesting, is to see an org chart. So in two weeks, three weeks, when you come back, I think that's a fair request to see a final org chart of all the employees, including their titles, including the duties, down to what they do, along with, you know, whatever details are needed on that. That's appropriate.
I would just also add that we need to be careful about giving direction to Jarb as individual council members. We need to do it as a group, so we're all in agreement as to what policy. If he starts listening to each one of us, and we all have our own concerns and desires, he's going to get lost with multitude of suggestions and requests and demands, so we just need to be cautious about what we ask of him, so. And that's why this kind of a thing should be agendized and probably discussed in closed session.
So, I'm not sure what we have next in terms of contract updates for us. Is that, I'm, I'm looking really to the city attorney for direction. If we wanted to discuss some of these things specifically, is that something we could agendize outside of our contract negotiations for next month?
Yes, the, the city ma, the city council can certainly meet in closed session with the, your, your representative, which is the city manager, and discuss where, I mean, we're in negotiation, so it's appropriate to do that.
Okay, as part of that process, or as part of, separate to accommodate what, what?
It's part, it's part of that process.
Okay. So next, next meeting, we'll, we'll look to have a, maybe a closed session, agendized item to, to talk about some of these things specific with the attorney.
Yes, and, and, and my goal is, is, because next month, next meeting is June, and, and my goal is to have the, the budget completed and presented to you by, by next meeting. And, and the goal is, again, I've been doing this, it'd be my 16 years I've been doing the budget, my goal is to submit the, the budget to, to you as a balanced budget, okay? That, that, that's my goal, so.
All right, to dovetail on top of that, we do have a combined meeting tomorrow.
Tomorrow is, is a budget, budget workshop, where, where I ask the department head to present to the, the city council and the budget committee what they have accomplished this year, and what they're planning for, for next year, and I will present it to, also to, to you and the budget committee, is the projected revenue for the next fiscal year and projected expenditure for the next fiscal year. Knowing that we've not completed with the labor negotiations yet, but I have the numbers that I have in my, so.
Okay, any other comments? Yes, sir, go ahead. I, I don't think there's anything else from the council, so. Reports of staff?
Yes, I, I want to report that, that the Pedestrian Bridge at the Raxdale, that we, we close, we, we close it with the, first with a chain length fence, it got cut, it cut twice.
Three times.
Three times, and, and threw into the channel. We replaced it with the wrought iron gate, and it got cut one time, and we just replaced that, and we put, this time we tried to, we put a security camera and see what would happen. We checked on Monday, over the weekend, it seemed to be okay.
I think you're taunting whoever's doing that.
Yeah.
We shouldn't do that.
And, and one more thing is, oh, go ahead.
I'm just curious, what, what demographic would be interested in cutting that?
Well, I, I think the, the conversation surrounding that decision was based on the neighborhood experiencing various levels of crime and activity with the homeless population that's living there along the channel and underneath Mountain View Bridge, so if, if they see that as a necessary avenue of ingress and egress, maybe, maybe that's it. I, I can't imagine it was the good people that were out biking with their families. I can't, I just don't picture them.
They're kind of proving the point of why we closed it in the first place, so.
Unfortunately.
It's, it's kind of a bad move on their part.
Well, I don't think it's, again, I don't think it's the good people, and that's the unfortunate part, is the good people that use it for recreation are the ones that, we said that, we identified that to begin with, they're the ones that suffer.
Yeah.
But yeah.
I have one more. As I, as I mentioned earlier, I will be leaving town on, on May the 17th, this Friday, and be back in town on May the 26th, and during my absence, Chief Dan Harker will be acting city managers.
Mr. Mayor, I do have an announcement. I do have good news to share. So as of last Friday, the city has received confirmation from HCD that we have a housing element in compliant with state law. So within SB County or San Bernardino County, out of the 25 cities here, we are one of 15 with a compliant element. So what that means is we'll be able to apply for housing grants from the state to help us with the implementation of the programs that we outlined in the element.
Awesome. That's awesome. Thank you. I know it's taken a while.
Isn't that the first time in my 18 years that we've had a compliant plan?
I believe the previous housing element took a few, a few years to become compliant, but our previous housing element was in compliant as well. That was in the previous planning cycle, and that's why we were able to apply for the housing grants that we did.
You said it was compliant?
It wasn't, yes, compliant with state law. The previous one was too.
Okay, awesome. Unless anybody has anything else, we'll adjourn the city council meeting and move into, Lynette, the Housing Authority, is that what you prefer? Doesn't matter?
Yes, but you will adjourn to tomorrow's joint special meeting.
Okay, so we adjourn to tomorrow's joint.
Yeah, 6 o'clock at the commute room.
Okay. Okay, moving on to the Housing Authority. Are there any items to be added or deleted here, sir?
No, sir.
Okay, anyone from the public wishing to speak on a housing agenda item or non-agendized housing item, please rush forward. Seeing nobody, we'll go ahead and move on to the consent calendar. We have a first and a second. Madam Clerk?
Motion is to approve the consent calendar as submitted. Please vote.
So I noticed these things are not as quick as they.
Motion carried.
As they normally, or they used to be. So I know when I'm pressing on my button, it's taking about 10 seconds to actually register. Is that something you guys have noticed? Because when we first got a member, they were like super, super quick.
Seems pretty quick to me.
Yeah, I don't know. I'm sorry, sir, we're not in a public comment period, so we're going to move forward. We'll adjourn the Housing Authority and move into the Successor Agency. Are there any items to be added or deleted?
No, sir.
Okay, anyone from the public wishing to speak on a non-agendized successor agency issue? Okay, seeing nobody, I'm going to close that and move on to the consent calendar.
Move it.
I have a first and a second. Madam Clerk?
Motion, motion is to approve the consent calendar as submitted. Please vote. Motion carries, thank you.
Thank you very much. Any comments from members? Comments from staff? Seeing none, we will go ahead and close and adjourn the successor agency. We'll see you guys tomorrow.